Good morning. It is Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, and I call to order the Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able and join us in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now is the time for public comment. The time period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Open that up, but I don't see staff in the office and I only see staff online. Is that your panelists there?
Right.
Oh, Barb and somebody else must be?
No, I work for the panelists at bar too.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. We have the panelists. Okay. All right. So there is no public right now. There's no agents or more reports. Consideration of minutes, there was a spelling correction that was made and it's been changed.
I would move approval of minutes with the change.
Been moved and seconded. Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Next, consideration of personnel actions.
I would move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Next, we have the consent agenda. Anyone calling anything for today's consent agenda? Your motion to approve this consent agenda. Been moved and seconded. Basil.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Haddon's aye. We have no public hearing items, so we are not up to additional items. We have discussion and considerations for ACE's PIP phase three project development project. We have Barb on here.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Barb.
So what, what we're bringing to you this morning is Phase Three of a project that we've been working on for the past year. And this was something that Matt in Environmental Health had started as an access program just to help make their, their work a little more efficient. And so he was really concerned that it was done in access and wanted it to be, you know, a software. So we reached out to the vendor who had done the jail helper for us since he knew our system. And originally, it was going to be divided into three phases, one and two, and then Phase Three after one and two were completed. So what we're bringing to you today, and I know you had a question about why isn't it on the, the, oh, the SIP? And the reason is, we didn't know when the timing would be for Phase Three. So Phase One and Two have been completed. The, the system does work. And we just got a quote last Friday for Phase Three and decided, well, last Friday or Thursday, and decided it probably needed to be on the agenda for the Board to discuss. And I will let Kim and Matt talk about that a little more, about the need for it and what it's going to do for the county. And depending on if it's approved or not, I will submit the paperwork for the SIP anyway. We just don't know the timing of it. So I will let, turn this over to Kim and Matt. I see they're already at the presentation table and let them take it away. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb. Good morning, Matt.
Morning.
Good morning.
So yeah, this next phase that Barbara was just talking about, this is pretty much just, I mean, it's the meat and potatoes of our system to take it from access to a web-based platform. It includes all of our programs as far as how we track, monitor, do all of our mailings, things like that. So it's really just the, the final phase of our system. And like she said, we just got the code and there's a lot more functionality to it than I think than what they, on the backend than what they were expecting. So that's kind of why the increased costs and stuff like that. So, and Matt, I mean, he's been here, he designed PIP to begin with. So for all the technical and the background questions, since I haven't been here very long, Matt is here to answer any of those questions and kind of, you know, see what you guys have to say.
One question I have is what, what will this give you that Phase One and Two doesn't provide?
Phase One was basically converting the access back at the database itself into SQL Server, which is more robust quicker, all that. And what was needed to move forward. Phase Two gave us the ability to see parcel information and the data that we have in PIP out in the field via website. And also, well, accepting information. Also provided subject contractors, whether I'm doing a type of transfer inspection, they could pull up their, the diagram themselves instead of having to call us and have us email to them. They can get that all on their own. And they're also able to submit pumping records. So when they go out, pump a system, they can enter that in. So that's reported. So you know, that kind of falls along with our new ordinance for the five years. So we keep track of all that. Phase Three would include everything that Phase Two didn't. It would convert the whole entire, like, right now, we are still using access in the office. We use the website or when out in the field, if we need to look up something, you know, or I'm doing a septic inspection, we can look up the permit, what the information was on permit and everything via the website. The Phase Three would allow us to, it would move everything web-based when we get rid of access. Basically, anything that we do in access, it would be on the website, creating the permits. The pool tattoo and tanning inspection stuff would also be web-based. This is, it would completely get rid of access as well.
And so all, everything would be in the cloud, basically?
Yeah.
All web-based. So when you say it would give access, is it gated information? Like, do you have to have?
Yeah, you have to have a password, username or password. And like for this, the contractors, the well contractors, septic contractors, they have different privileges than, than staff would have. They can't, they can look up documents and see the information that we have, but they can't, except for like the public records, spending the type of transfer report.
And everything we do now, they basically come back after they do their inspection and then they come back to their desktop and they enter it. This will allow us to do a lot of that in the field and stuff like that. So that'll be a little bit more efficient for our staff.
More real, real time?
Yes.
And one of IT's concerns was getting rid of the access portion of it and having everything to the web-based and having an outside company that was doing all the work on it and everything. As, as Marty always says, she was always afraid I would get hit by a bus and.
Something goes wrong.
It does, it does make sense to have, yes, have that knowledge more than just one brief.
Yeah.
So who enters the pumping and records?
The, the contractors that have a username and access to the website can enter it.
Contractors will have access to this website simply for that one thing or?
They have access to it now. That was part of Phase Two. And they, the three main contractors, pumpers in Story County do enter in all the information. We got some of them, you know, from like Warren County that are here maybe once every two months. They're not using it. You know, it's, they kind of don't think about it. But anybody though, any of the contractors that want access to it, all they have to do is contact us. We've sent out emails to several of the contractors to let them know that this is available, but.
So they want to have access to the entire?
No, no, they will only have access to the pertinent information. It depends on how you sign in, what privileges you have.
Okay. But the pumpers should don't get access, then you have staff and probably enter that information. And this is going to be in the cloud?
It's actually stored here.
Stored here on server.
Yeah.
Do we need a new server?
No, no. All we have is capable. So there's nothing new on the backend side of it, just the software, so.
And does this get rid of another piece of software by having it all?
Not really. Access is part of the office suite, so.
Okay.
Just want to have an application and access.
Right.
Yeah. So what, what did they originally estimate the Phase Three would be?
There was never really an estimate. I, this was something that an outside vendor would have to really dig into and sit down and really look at. But the Phase One and Phase Two, we were trying to take the baby steps into getting, because as intense as and complicated as what PIP is, I, it does a lot of automated things. So it took them, it took them three or four weeks just to get the quote together for the Phase Three. And several times of Sean and I going over things. Him discovering something new that's back in us.
That they weren't aware of? Yeah.
And that's exactly right. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we didn't, we knew there would be three phases, but Phase Three was a question mark until he'd gone through what Matt had done and organized it a little better. And, you know, so a lot of the baby steps were done in Phase One and Two just to get it organized and ready for Phase Three. And like I said, we didn't even know what the estimate for Phase Three would be until last week. So it is functional. It does work. Now they just want to take it to the next step.
The same company that's been, I think, helping with the other phases and just even when you had some things before that, that's something we're using?
No, there was no outside.
No other outside?
So if you end up with a new responsibility, no, that always happens, you know, either by, by legislature, enacting law or by us deciding on a county ordinance, wouldn't it be going back to the same software company to add another?
Yes.
Yes, have them add another module or something like that. What have we spent so far on Phases One and Two?
Phase One, you had forty-six, forty-six hundred dollars, forty-six twenty-five, and then Phase Two was twenty-three six eighty is what is the information I was given.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three six eighty.
So this is going to be over a hundred thousand dollars.
And Phase One and Two were budgeted.
Okay.
Were they giving you any indication that this is going to be almost ninety thousand dollars for Phase Three? I feel like that's quite a surprise.
They didn't, but I, I knew, I knew from the beginning that this was going to be over a hundred thousand dollars. But like Barb said, you know, we budgeted for Phase One and Two. And the plan, you know, kind of, but I guess the timeline's kind of moved up a little bit more than what, things got done a little quicker than what thought we thought.
You're originally, we're going to put it in the FY twenty-three budget.
I think that was the plan, yes.
Ninety and sixty, it's really going to be a hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, the twenty-three and the thousand and the four thousand.
Hundred, hundred and twenty thousand, hundred and twenty-five.
And what we might want to look at, I, I know Story County's never done this before, but as Kim and I were talking last week, she comes from a smaller county and they don't have something like this. They, they really scrambled to try to get the information together. And I think a lot of the smaller counties are in the same boat. If we wanted to market this, we would also have that option. Like I said, it's nothing we've done before, but we might want to offer it to some of the smaller counties to help them with the same workload that we have, but with fewer staff.
We own it, so we don't have to get the permission of the software company to market it.
Correct.
Before, correct?
Yes, this is ours. We own it.
So if other counties were interested, they might have to go to the, if they needed some, maybe that's a question to ask the company. Could the other counties then go back to the software company and be able to get some reasonably priced assistance in tailoring it to them? Or are they going to say, no? We want to, well, you know.
We, we've discussed that with them and they're very open to that, of course, based on, you know, the program they've already created for us. So yeah, that's, that's an option to look at in the future.
Wanted to make sure that they wouldn't say, okay, yeah, we'll add this little thing on for fifty thousand dollars or ninety thousand dollars or something like that, but it's already, in other words, we shouldn't, people should have to pay for it twice.
No.
Pay for it twice. I think that would be an interesting thing to do. And maybe, maybe that could be done through ISF.
Oh, I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, we could perhaps offer that.
So Phase Three is basically moving everything else that's still in access over to this.
Mm-hmm. And I know we had some discussions too, like originally, like, you know, can we break it up into a couple pieces and, and do it that way? But it just wasn't feasible. It's so interrelated to everything we do that to try to do it in different phases would have been very inconvenient. They're hard to test the dynamics of it's working. So it's kind of why it had to be done all at once.
Yeah. Is there an urgency, I mean, being that it's unbudgeted now and not fit into this year twenty-three budget?
I think it was more of a momentum thing where we just got, we've been going pretty well on it. It's been moving pretty forward. I don't know if, what the pumping situation was or anything. I'm not sure that we have like an urgency here.
No, it, it is just momentum and it's, it's fresh in ACS's mind, you know, they, they're working. It's kind of hard, you know, for them to step away from it and they get back to it and remember how everything was from Phase Two to now.
I think with two of us being, two of the three of us being new, it was kind of a good time too to have, learn any new systems instead of, you know, learning one and then having to transition completely. So we'll kind of have that in our head as we're moving forward.
Well, I assume that this is going to help significantly in terms of monitoring the pumpouts that are subordinated reports.
Yeah, it will help. I mean, just permanently in all of our programs for monitoring and tracking and reporting, so.
Sometimes it's painful to step into the future. It just occurs for a time.
Well, I think we've got, the fact that Matt has worked for a long time. And is that what's on with this access database? And I hear a comment like, well, they had to take more time because they had to figure out all the functionality.
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're fortunate that, they're fortunate actually. I mean, they didn't have to, the design work, you basically, you basically did that. Give a little credit for that. You know, since they didn't start it out from scratch one, it seems like a pretty heavy amount of money, but the complexity is the issue.
Yeah, it's been ten years of making it and custom tailored to every single need that we have, but.
Is, is there any ongoing costs after this? Any additional maintenance costs or?
We kind of discussed that a little bit, but haven't really come down to anything.
Yeah, we're going to be pretty minimal as far as maintenance and stuff go. Something needs to be changed and stuff, especially with that first year, which they, I think in that report, they did put forty hours in of support for that first year because we both find the bugs and the different things like that. But then after that first year, it should be pretty minimal.
Right. Yeah, they did include some support in that. I think it was seven thousand four hundred dollars. And they said that if we didn't use that, we could keep it banked. And so even if we went past year one, if there was still money remaining, they would just apply it toward that.
Like right now.
They'd apply it towards what? I'm sorry, Barb.
Like after year one, if we still had questions or needed to reach out, if we hadn't used all of that seven thousand four hundred, it would just be banked and, and we could still draw on that even after year one.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that.
So that's why we didn't ask for additional support.
How many hours of support is that?
It's about forty, they said.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Yeah, they charge a hundred and eighty-five an hour. Which is market value, as we found working with other vendors.
And Lisa Markley had another meeting, so she's not available. Or any questions for her related to this?
Did anybody talk to her about, or so this was in some, but I did not.
No, we haven't reached out to Lisa on this.
I think all the reports we've had were in pretty good shape, so I think that she will be able to find it.
And I do know with the hardware line item in the IT budget, we aren't able to get what we've budgeted for simply because of shortages and the chip dilemma. So we may be able to apply some of that toward this. Pardon?
I said that's good to know.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we always try to move things around if we can.
Oh, oh. Yeah, the meet criteria for bids. What the requirements are for bids.
So maybe Barb can, you answer that? Barb, did you hear the question?
No, I'm sorry.
The meet criteria for bids.
Originally, it did not, because Phase One was under the criteria. I think at this point, entertaining bids, you'd have a lot more than eighty-nine thousand involved in it. Because if, if somebody else came in with a lower bid, they wouldn't know anything that had been done at Phase One and Two. So then they would have to review it or screw something up or, you know, not, not, not design it the way ACS had originally planned. They may have different ideas and then it would not make Phase One and Two work. This was kind of a unique situation, so yeah, I don't think at this point the bids would help that.
Are we required to put it out?
That's the question. Question. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
I would talk to you, but I don't think at this point you would require it because it's phases. I would get the legal. Okay, okay. So it sounds like we need to get a legal opinion. On it.
We have to bring it back.
Probably we're going to get that information.
I'm looking through the auditors right now. I can't, I can't find the policy we should be looking at. We're at twenty-five thousand principal amount, request proposal or minimum two written slash email quotations.
Yeah, that applies when this is a phased project, we've done Phase One and Two with the same vendor that I don't.
I wonder if we shouldn't have put out more for the entire thing. I think we need to check the future. That's a good question.
Good question. So looking at putting it on the December seventh agenda, next week's agenda. That we can get that information, then you'll know what you need to do moving forward as well. Shelley, what do you need from us? Other comments or questions at this time? All right, we'll just find, we'll find that information out and we'll place it on next week's agenda.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Yes, thank you, Barb. Looking on, we don't have any other reports or other reports, upcoming agenda items. We know this would be one of, one thing that would be back on the agenda for discussion. Okay. Yes, we'll move on to public forum number two. Comments from the public items not on this agenda. The Board may not take any action on the comments, leave the requirements about the meetings, but maybe so in the future. Like to make public comment. If you're on Zoom, please use the right-hand function or unmute yourself. I think I've seen all staff on here, but if they'd like to make public comment. Not seeing anyone jump to public comment, so we will close public comment. Ladies on assignments, maybe any updates in the announcements? Right, so Basil wants to start?
Hi, this is, this is my quiet, relatively quiet week, so I've got alternative meeting on Thursday. We've got our public meeting this afternoon. Well, no, I'm sorry. I have climate action, inclement action meeting Wednesday.
Again, the ARCA work session this afternoon. Tomorrow, I have a regional broadband student committee meeting in April eleventh. And we're going to look at the, what's, looks like the final draft of the the consultant study there. I'm going to be gone from the second through the sixth. I'm going to be on stage and I'll be back on Tuesday, the seventh for the board meeting.
I have a Board of Health interview on Friday. I went to ARCA today, the Board of Health interview on Friday. And then on Monday, the sixth, I was kind of planning on attending that noon is the Hartland Greenway Pipeline. They have a their informational thing for the IUV at least that day. It's actually from twelve to two, so I'm going to plan on attending that.
On the sixth?
I have it on the sixth.
Yeah.
From twelve, from twelve to two.
Be not able to recommend on that. So anything that you can find of interest, I appreciate.
Yep, certainly, certainly. I'm going to assume it's going to be kind of like the previous one where it's, you know, are they, they have to have the meeting, are they meeting certain criteria to answer, answer questions? My assumptions, what it will be. My assumptions, what it will be. If there is nothing else, is there an option to adjourn? Second, the move to consecutive, our guest time, Basil. Seven, five, we are adjourned.